Get started with the Sims Township Zoning Commission meeting from January 17th, 2024. If anyone could stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly Rolco.
Mr. Utter?
Here.
Ms. Coughlin?
Here.
Ms. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Mr. Reichman?
Here.
All right, um, next up is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
You second it?
I'm gonna let her second since this could be her last.
You're second.
Okay.
Mr. Utter?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes. All right, and.
You skipped over election of officers.
Oh, you're right. Okay, well.
We could do Mr. Curry if you want.
That's on the, that's on the agenda, so we gotta approve the agenda before we have the election of officers. So next up is the election of officers. So we have both a chairman and a vice chairman. And I'll make a nomination for Greg Kessler for chairman.
I'll second. Mr. Utter?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
I humbly accept the nomination.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Okay, and then for a vice chairman, so, um.
There's two of us.
I mean, it doesn't really.
Yeah, I mean, I'll do it.
Okay, so I think that's the, the normal course of rotation. So I'll make a motion, uh, that Todd Utter, uh, be the vice chair.
I'll second. Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Utter?
Yes.
All right, so we can hand down the proverbial.
Gavel.
Giant gavel.
Yeah. So do I take over from here?
I think so.
Well, it was, it was an honor to, to have you as my, my mentor.
Oh, please.
Is that going in the minutes?
Duly noted, huh?
If I can get a motion for approval of the minutes for the meeting from July 19, 2023.
Um, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Mr. Utter?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
All right, first up and only up on this evening's itinerary is a public hearing revising the language of, I'm not gonna say various sections of the Sims Township zoning resolution. Do I need to specify each specific? Brian?
Brian Snyder coming to any development. Uh, you should have a copy of the staff report that we prepared for this case. This is a exempting text amendment to the Sims Township zoning resolution. This text amendment would amend various sections of the Sims Township zoning resolution that we'll discuss briefly. This amendment was initiated by the Sims Township Board of Trustees and includes two basic amendments to various sections of the code. So all of the sections that are being amended are the various residential sections for both of the, the basic amendments. These are all of the residential sections, um, A through D, I believe. The first set of amendments applies to a proposed amendment to the agricultural setback requirement. Agricultural uses in the state of Ohio are exempt from zoning, completely exempt from zoning if they're on properties that are over five acres. So this does not apply to them. Zoning in general does not apply to agriculture over five acres. So this is meant to apply to properties that are less than five acres. The Ohio revised code allows limited regulation of agricultural uses on properties less than five acres. Currently, the Sims Township zoning resolution lumps pretty much everything into one section in each of the residential districts that allows agricultural uses on less than five acres, provided that everything is set back 60 feet from all residential property lines. That includes everything from crops to animal husbandry uses, everything agricultural 60 feet from the property line. The trustees are proposing to raise that from 60 feet to 100 feet from all of the property lines. Staff has no issue with this. The Hamilton County zoning resolution has the, the individual agricultural uses broken out much more finely than the Sims zoning code does. But for animal husbandry and, um, animal keeping, um, the setback in this, in the Hamilton County zoning resolution is 100 feet. So staff has no issue with the proposed increase from 60 to 100 in the Sims Township zoning resolution. So that's, that's all the sections point one. All the sections point four are the next set of amendments. This would change the frontage requirements. Currently, there are no frontage requirements in the zoning resolution. There's just a minimum lot width and a minimum lot size. Frontage is handled as part of the subdivision creation or the lot splitting, and that is covered by the Hamilton County subdivision rules and regulations currently. The Hamilton County subdivision rules and regulations require each property to either have a 20 feet of frontage for a minimum of one lot. So if you have one lot, you have to have a minimum of 20 feet of legal frontage on a public street. And then if you have, if you were gonna create a cut-up or a minor subdivision of up to five lots, you can do five panhandles in a 30-foot area. You can't do more than five lots in a 30-foot area before, after that, you have to build a public street. And you can't have any lot be created on its own with less than 20 feet of frontage. So that's currently what the subdivision rules and regulations require. It's been that way probably since close to the creation of the subdivision rules and regulations. I tried to go back and find the originals, I can't find them. But it's been, it's been in place for a number of years. You look at a map of Sims Township, property map of Sims Township, there are panhandle lots all over the place. It was, it's wide, it's a widely used technique to deal with issues of, um, limited frontage or limited, um, width of portions of property when you're building a subdivision. The proposal is to change the requirement for the lot width, which currently is at the building line. So when you have a panhandle lot, you go back your panhandle and then the lot opens up somewhere. It has to open up to the minimum lot width. So for instance, in the A residence district, most of the lots are in A district in Sims, the minimum lot width is 100 feet. So when you get back to the end of your panhandle, your lot has to be a minimum of 100 feet wide. This would change that to requiring the minimum lot width at the right-of-way line. So that, instead of 20 feet, and then you could widen out in the back, you would have to have 100 feet at the, at the frontage. So that would prevent anybody from creating a new panhandle lot. You wouldn't be able to do it. You also wouldn't be able to create lots around the end of cul-de-sacs because those lots are pie-shaped lots. Lots on bends and roads, any lot that would result in the front being narrower than the back, which on top of all the panhandle lots, there's probably another thousands and thousands of lots that are shaped like that, that don't have the, the frontage at the, um, at the street. So because this applies, first of all, let me back up, this would only apply to new lots. Every lot that exists, every panhandle lot and every pie-shaped lot that exists is a, is a conformer, non-performing lot of record if this were to pass. But lots of record are buildable lots. You don't, there's no way that any zoning text amendment would make somebody go out and find 80 more feet of frontage where they can't build on their lot. That's not legal, um, so that's not what would happen. This is applying to new lots, new subdivisions. If this were passed the way that it was initiated by the trustees, you would never have another cul-de-sac. They wouldn't be able to build the lots around the cul-de-sac. So they would all end in straight T turnaround so that they can keep the lot width going all the way to the end. You also would have issues with lots not being able to be created around curves and roads. I don't think that was the intention. I think the intention is to stop tear downs from occurring. Looking around other places in the state of Ohio, the only place I could find with something similar was Anderson Township. And they require a minimum of 20 feet for every lot. So you can't do the five lots on the 30-foot strip that the county subdivision regulations allow you to do. Every lot has to have a minimum of 20. And if you use a panhandle with 20 feet of frontage, you have to have 1.5 times the size of the district. So if it's a 20,000 square foot minimum lot size in the A district, you have to have 30,000 square feet to be able to do it. So it raises the requirement for areas, or that reduces the number of lots that you can put in a rear situation. And then both of them have to have 20-foot panhandles instead of one 30-foot strip. I personally don't see the, the need to change this, but also I, I don't have a problem with tear downs. I know a lot of people do. So the only way that I can see to do, to accomplish something close to stopping the, the teardown phenomenon is to change it to what, something similar to what Anderson Township has. And that is on page five of the staff report, if you have that, the recommended changes. So what staff recommended in the staff report was to support the 100-foot, um, increase for agricultural uses for a setback. Leave all of the, the point four sections as is, so it still would say building line, not right-of-way line. And then to add these two new sections to the zoning resolution, basically one new section and one definition. And it would be 200%, not 150%, so I apologize. Instead of, if you have a 20,000 square foot minimum lot size, it'd be 40,000 that you would have to have, almost an acre instead of a half acre.
So you're proposing greater than Anderson Township?
No, no, this is what Anderson did, I apologize. I, I had, I said to 150, it's 200.
Okay, sorry.
Have you heard any criticism or positives with respect to Anderson's proposal?
We haven't because now that it's in the zoning code, instead of in the subdivision rules and regulations, they don't, they've already talked to Anderson Zoning about, about this before they come down to get the subdivision created at the county. All subdivisions in all townships, regardless of who has zoning authority, come through the planning commission. So we see all of them, but if anybody were complaining about it, they'd be complaining to the zoning department before they come to our office. So I wouldn't necessarily have heard. I mean, obviously, there are some people out there that have larger lots that, you know, had planned on creating estates for their families or that had planned on having this ability in the future. Maybe they bought five acres because they knew they'd be able to split it up into five lots someday if they needed money. I mean, it'll impact, um, some people with large properties. It'll reduce their property value for sure. But I haven't personally heard any complaints from Anderson Township, no.
And have we had any, um, issues regarding this in Sims Township? Or is this just prophylaxis?
I'm not certain. I know that there have been, um, some panhandle developments created recently. I don't know if there was a house there before, and I'm not sure if they tore the house down and created additional lots. I, I know there's been a case where one home had extra land where two lots were created and the original home was, was maintained, um, recently, but not, it's not something we see every day. We don't do a lot of cut-ups in, in Sims Township. And this is really applying to cut-ups more than major subdivisions.
So when you say apply to cut-ups, is this the concern with the tear downs? That a lot that would have had one home on it, now they're gonna try and squeeze two or three homes into the same property?
Correct.
Yeah, thereby requiring a home behind a home or whatever.
Yep.
Okay, so the trustees are probably, you know, not liking those, and so they're thinking this is the solution. But my other, so I just wanted to clarify that. My other concern was what this might do to deter development in Sims Township.
It will limit the number of homes. It'll reduce the number of homes built in the township.
There can't be a lot of land in Sims to develop.
No, and that's, that's why this will have more of an impact than it would have if there was a lot of vacant land and a lot of big subdivisions could be, um, you know, coming forward. And they would have to design them around the regulations. But no, this, this applies more like to the four and five acre tracts that are left in between all the subdivisions. And that's what, that's the, the most, um, single-family development potential in Sims are for smaller, smaller developments.
And how would this work? So I know you mentioned that in the subdivision regulations, if you have five, if you create five lots, then you have to do the public road. And I know in a lot of the, the codes that we work on, we'll say that if there's like three or four lots stacked, then it has to have a public road. But how would, I guess, how would that work with like, if we had, if we required 20 feet across? How many, like, would it be the same thing where you could only have five 20-feet frontages before you did a road?
Well, no, so for instance, right now, um, if you, if you imagine, um, like somebody has a rectangular piece of property, they're gonna put two lots on the street. They're gonna meet the lot width at the street. And in between those two, they're gonna run a 30-foot strip with panhandles. And they're gonna, depending how wide the lot is, they're gonna try and fit three more houses in the back. So those last three would share that private driveway, and the other two would be on the frontage. And that might be a, a property that currently has one house on it, that just had a, a really wide lot. You won't be able to have the two on the street if everybody had to have 20 feet of frontage. So those three in the back would have to now go from, from 30 to 60. So one of those lots would be gone. And if you tried to do all five of them off of a panhandle, you'd have to have 100 feet of just panhandle. So that, and panhandles you can't build on because it's 20 feet wide. And you can't cross property lines. So you've got, you're, you're essentially creating an A-sized lot that nobody can build on, which would limit the, you know, the likelihood that somebody's actually gonna do that.
Yeah, I can see the benefit of, of not having a ton of, of cut-up properties on what used to be one. But I also would hate to lose, uh, a builder to lose the opportunity to have cul-de-sacs in the neighborhood because they're so desirable, you know? And, uh, and any street that has a curve on it, like you said, would be affected too. And curvy streets are also very desirable and pretty. And so now you've kind of, to fix one problem or creating another problem?
That's certainly the case with the way it was initiated by the trustees. That's why we recommended the changes. And like I said, personally, I don't, I don't feel that there's a need to change anything. But like I said, I personally don't have a problem with somebody tearing down and building three houses because that's what zoning allows. I mean, that's what your property rights say you're allowed to have when you bought that property. That's what you thought you were gonna be able to do. But that's my personal opinion. My recommendation is based on understanding the trustees want to do something about this, but the unintended consequences of the way they initiated it, I think, warrant some kind of change. And this was the best that I could come up with in the research that I did.
So is there a, um, maybe another way to, to, to get to where the trustees are looking to get to, which is to, you know, avoid all of these high-density, um, properties, uh, you know, by limiting, you know, zero, uh, whatever you call it, zero-edge lots, uh, you know, by requiring that there can only be a certain amount of buildable square footage on a piece of property, something like that, uh, in a manner to, you know, keep from having, you know, small, big houses on small lots?
Well, the setbacks create the buildable area. And there's not, there's not a good way to limit the buildable area of a, of a lot, um, like that. That's what setbacks generally do. So you have, everybody has to follow the same setbacks, and that creates a buildable area. When you have a standard subdivision with 100-foot wide lots all the way down the street, everybody's buildable area is exactly the same.
Right.
And that would be the same with this. This, that, that wouldn't change. You'd still have to have a minimum 100, um, foot by 200-foot lot in an A district. You still have to have a 20,000 square foot lot with 100 foot of lot width at the building line and all the same setbacks. So if you did that, then you'd be reducing the, um, the buildable area for everybody's lot on all the A districts and all the houses that are right at the setback lines who would potentially be non-conforming. You would limit their ability to do additions and decks. It would be, um, it could create a lot of problems.
What would you ask, what are we doing, the trustees?
Glad you brought that up. I apologize, I usually do that in the, the original presentation. The text amendment, the text amendment is a zone change. In the state of Ohio, it does require a process. It has to go to the, to the, um, I'm sorry, it gets recommend, sent to the regional planning commission for a recommendation. The Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission did consider this case on their agenda at the January 4th Regional Planning Commission meeting and did recommend approval unanimously of the, um, recommendation with the changes on attachment A on page five of the report. There was very limited discussion. They, they seemed to agree with the changes, and we didn't, there was no real discussion amongst the members as to whether or not they thought it was a good idea. But they did recommend approval. This meeting is also a recommendation. You're required to make a recommendation to the township trustees. You're not necessarily required to do it tonight, but at some point, you have to take an action to make a recommendation to the township trustees to approve, deny, or modify their initiated text amendment. Then they will have to make, um, the decision at a, a public hearing in the future.
So if we deny, just hypothetically.
If you recommend denial, because all you're doing is making a recommendation, right?
Do they have to have just two-thirds vote?
Yeah, it's a, it's a straight unanimous, or a straight, um, up or down vote.
Majority.
Yeah, it's just a regular majority.
So the regional planning commission voted to approve both the changes?
Yes.
The point ones and the point fours?
But as this.
No, no, they.
With these recommendations.
With these recommendations.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I didn't misunderstand.
No problem.
Okay, so could we also say that we would like to follow the, um, regional commissions guidelines?
Yes.
As a group, that we would approve their guidelines as their recommendation?
Yes, you can agree with the regional planning commission and recommend the same thing to the trustees.
For clarification, does that include the proposed Anderson?
Yes. So the, the, the way that the, um, the staff report is, is written, on page four, there's a recommended motion with changes per attachment A. It's a recommendation of approval with the changes. Attachment A is on page five. The regional planning commission passed that motion with attachment A as written. So the la, the last two pages of your package should be the planning commission's actual actions. So you can see that they took a motion that was a four to zero vote to recommend approval with changes per attachment A, and then attachment A should be the last page.
So on, Brian, on section, new section 171.5? Just, just for my understanding, where, where you say, uh, we'll have the minimum area of not less than 200% of the minimum lot area. So what would happen if, if it was 150 or if it was 250? I mean, would either of those?
Percentages?
Yeah, right.
I took what Anderson Township wrote, because I know that their law director reviewed it before they passed it, and they've had it for a number of years, and nobody has successfully challenged it. So 200% seems like a good number. I mean, you don't want it to be impossible, uh, but you don't want it to be easy. And that's, 200% seems like about the right amount. If you're worried about getting three lots, you might get one now.
So hypothetically speaking, if, if someone comes in with a development plan and has a cul-de-sac, or is using this as an example as it is now, um, and it doesn't meet the width at the, at the property line, does the person bringing it in have the opportunity to request a variance and go through that process?
So the, the way that that would work would be a developer would be bringing in a major subdivision, building a public street with a cul-de-sac on it. And that, that person would have to come in and do hypothetical variances on properties that don't exist, which is always tricky because those lots haven't been created yet. They'd like to create those lots, but they can't get zoning approval for it. So they, they have a, they have a, there has to be a way for them to ask for a variance. I honestly don't know what that would be in that specific situation, but we would have to work that out with the attorney.
So there's, it's, now it's a circular reference, is what you're saying? There's no answer, you're just gonna.
Right, it's, it, like I said, I, I know that their intent wasn't to do that. So I was trying to come up with something else, another way to, to deter the tear downs without actually requiring the lot width at the, um, at the right-of-way line.
Could the developer come in as a planned unit development then instead? And then we would have the opportunity to make those decisions?
That's, yes. If they had the, um, the acreage and the extra land to, to vote to open space that would qualify them for the CUP, they could go through that process. That's a four to six-month process. There is no administrative PUD in Sims Township. It's a zone change, so the planning commission, zoning commission, and township trustees would all have to hear that.
Yeah, I would be hesitant.
But yeah, they went through that process, they could.
I would be hesitant to like enact a, a situation in the, in the code that if somebody's doing like three lots, that they would have to do a PUD if it was like a curved street or something, you know?
Oh, I think this is ridiculous. No, I'm just coming up with it. I'm always looking at how do I get out of this? Because this is, I don't understand this.
Yeah, I'm.
I don't see, and the other thing I don't understand is, is this one person coming up with this idea? Or is it the township as a whole, there's a cry from the people?
I, I honestly, I don't know. I wasn't at the trustees meeting where they initiated it. When, when the trustees initiate text amendments, um, it's usually the first I hear about it is after they've already passed the resolution. So this is just what I got sent to me and.
I'm not trying to be disrespectful to the powers that be, even though.
I honestly don't know what process it went through before the trustees initiated. I wasn't part of that process.
That's what I was, procedurally, who drafts the language? How's it prepared? How's it submitted?
Um, the township administrator and whoever she involves in it, I believe. And then the trustees obviously review it because they act on it, so.
And then going to the, the, the point ones, um, your, what is the reasoning, to the best of your knowledge, of going from a 60 feet to 100 on an acreage less than five? Mathematically, it's becoming difficult at that point on an acreage number. Once we start getting down to two or three acres, you're proportionally, unless it's a narrow lot, which is that we can't do anyway, so.
Right, but, I mean, you can find a 60-foot by 60-foot by 60-foot area on a, a regular 20,000-square-foot lot if you have the, the, the perfect layout. You can do it. But it's very, it, it's, it's far harder to find a 60 by 60 by 60-foot, I'm sorry, a 100 by 100 by 100-foot area on a, a standard lot size anywhere in the township less than an acre. It starts to get further away. And so you limit the ability to have it on smaller lots.
So we had this case a, a few years ago where people wanted chickens. Does that, would this apply to this?
It would not, um, because it might have then, um, but, and, and I, I don't remember the case exactly. I remember if it was before there were suburban chicken standards or.
All those standards.
After, yes.
And I don't know what husbandry means, I don't know what that word means.
Husbandry, uh, it, yeah, anything having to do with keeping animals.
So a dog?
A dog, dogs are completely separate. There are also agricultural uses, kennels are agricultural uses. The amount of agricultural uses is, um, ever-expanding through the court system.
So it's generic almost, because it's not even cut.
The, the whole idea is, is that the, the township doesn't want people using their small properties for agricultural purposes in the front of their house?
Have a llama farm in your backyard.
And honestly, the Sims Township.
A llama farm? Yeah.
The Sims Township zoning resolution used to be set up very similar to the Hamilton County zoning resolution. And the way that our zoning code at the county works, that 60 feet applies to crops and everything else related to crops, and 100 feet applies to animals and everything related to keeping animals. And when Sims Township simplified the agricultural regulations at some point, if you look in the code, there's a number of sections that are left blank, that used to have text, that used to be all of the different agricultural sections. And it was consolidated into one simpler section. And they chose the smaller of the two setbacks when they did that. For whatever reason, I wasn't, I don't believe I was even working at the county at the time that that happened.
Can I give you a hypothetical? So I'm, I'm aware of a home, um, in a, a neighborhood that's basically half-acre lots. And they have a huge garden in the front lawn, um, that's within 10 feet of the street line. Would that be not allowed under something like this?
If it wasn't allowed, um, less than 60, it wouldn't be allowed less than 100.
And I'm pretty sure it's less than 60.
Easiest way to answer that, if it, if it wouldn't comply after, it wouldn't comply today either way, right?
Usually private gardens and things like that on agriculture.
Well, if you grow past it, you would pause.
I know, I'm sure that's been litigated at some point in time.
It's not a problem for me, but.
We could probably go find some definition of agriculture versus personal.
I think it is a problem for other people.
Yeah, but since it's any building, structure, exterior, storage, refuse, or supplies, I wouldn't think that would apply to like the growing of plants.
Right, right.
Yeah, but if you had a little shed in the front.
Okay, well, then that, yes.
And if it's fenced in, the fence is actually, is listed in that list as well.
But it probably isn't, it's probably, well, it's not 60 feet.
I mean, I don't really have an issue making that 100 because it does kind of protect next-door neighbors. And we always have the variance route. So if somebody has a unique situation where, you know, they can justify that they only have 50 feet and their neighbors don't care, you know, like they have that ability to ask. I, I mean, again, I don't know if it's really necessary at the same time, but I'm not.
But we're trying to be proactive in this, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm right with you, trust me.
So making it stricter.
I know you don't recommend this, but do you have an amendment if it's necessary?
I, I know, I know some very specific people who find it very necessary. I, I know, I know some very specific people who find it very necessary at this moment to have 100 instead of 60.
I can see that there would be examples where, you know, to protect the neighborhood, um, 100 might be desirable. It basically says you've got to put every, all of that at the back of the house, not in front of the house.
Side yards and that.
No, there are no, there, there's no limitation on where you can use agri, where you can have an agricultural use.
So it's just setbacks in general, so it doesn't, to your point, it could be anywhere. It's not a front yard, rear yard, side.
No, right, but it does.
Most houses.
Most houses are more than 100 feet.
If you've got 100 feet, that you're already at the house line.
Yeah, the largest setback is 50 feet, so 100 feet is already twice as far back as most houses would sit, so.
Right, so it basically pushes to the backyard.
Right.
So I'd be in favor of that.
Me too.
And I also, am I allowed to just express an opinion now or do we go into discussion?
Please go.
Yeah, better.
I, 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 in just my opinion, I think the township trustees, um, have proposed something that's not feasible really or workable. I, I kind of like what the, um, regional commission came up with, um, as an alternative. Cause I find, uh, that what the trustees came up with is just going to impede development. It's going to impede what property, what developments will look like.
Yeah.
And I just really feel negative about that.
Well, I agree with you, Deborah. I think, uh, your point, uh, that you made earlier that cul-de-sacs are desirable, curved streets are desirable. All those would, would be, you know, the, the precedent that we want to encourage, not, um.
At least not restrict.
Right, right, right.
I mean, I'm thinking even on my street, as it curves, there's a lot where, yeah, they probably have 30 feet um, that touch the street and they just have a long driveway that goes back. Cause they have plenty of room back there. I mean, like, it wouldn't make any sense for, like, when that subdivision came in to say no. Like that, that lot couldn't be created. It's not a paning in the lot. It's just a curve. Yeah.
Yeah, it is. So Brian, um, you made a comment that, and it was your opinion, and I, I respect that, that you thought that the point four was to prevent teardowns. Is that your interpretation of that or that just the reality? If I have a 100-foot lot house now and I tear it down, there's, there's nothing that stops me, right? 100-foot width at the property.
Correct.
So what's the correlation in, in your opinion of, of the preventing teardowns?
So when, to create a teardown, you have to create new lots. You can't tear down a house and put two houses on the same lot. Because that's a multifamily use at that point. You can only have one house per lot. So you find somebody with two acres and you tear down their house and then you can split it into three lots that meet the zoning. You have to do the lot split and the, the way people do that is by creating panhandles out to the street. So that's how you get a house that has frontage on the street and two houses that are on panhandles behind them. When you stack two houses.
You're not saying that if there's an existing house, a 100-foot lot or whatever it is, I can tear it down and just build another house there. That's not what you're saying.
No, no, you can do that anytime.
That's what I, that was my interpretation. I'm like.
So, so if you.
I don't know if I say that is because the city of Loudoun, when I was living there, they ca- they said you cannot tear down houses. I was like, you gotta be kidding me.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's another way. And I mean, I, that's, I, I didn't recommend that because I, I think that's illegal.
So, so if you've got a, 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 I don't know, a 1,500 square, square foot house on a one acre property and somebody buys that, wants to put a 3,000 square foot house, no problem.
Nope, right.
And really what this means is that if you have an acre and you have one house on an acre, right now, you could divide that into two houses on an acre. Because you could make two, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, right?
Yeah, so right now it's 100 feet at the building line, so you would have to maintain your 100 feet. You could only do it if you already had 120 feet.
Yeah, cause you'd need 20 for the panhandle on the tree.
Right.
And you'd need 100. But if your lot was only 100 wide, but it was very deep.
You still couldn't do it.
You still couldn't do it.
We wouldn't let you do that. And that's why we, we do the zoning review for the subdivisions when they come in. And if you, we don't let you create a new non-conforming lot by creating a new lot. Like, even if the house that sits there and you want to keep it, doesn't meet the setbacks from the new panhandle lot, line, we won't let you do that either. Like you can't create variances through the lot split process. We don't let you do that. It has, the, the existing lot has to meet zoning and the new lot has to meet zoning. They both have to meet zoning or we don't let you create the new lot at all.
I mean, the places where I see the teardowns having much more impact is the tightly knit areas that are, are very highly desirable, like Madeira and Blue Ash and Montgomery, where you may have a 15,000 square foot lot that they're trying to divide into two. Like we're not, it's not the same situation to me as taking an acre and putting it in two. You know, the situations where they're really like putting a house in someone's backyard, that, that to me is a different situation than.
You know, there's that house, um, on Montgomery Road, or where there was a property on Montgomery.
John L's building right there.
Yeah, exactly. And they're putting two houses panhandled and I don't know if that's, somebody's got a problem with that or not. And, you know, but that's the only thing that I can think of.
That was my thought too. We're just giving a recommendation.
Yeah, all right, well, I mean, given that there's no, uh, there's nobody here to have a question, I think we can probably just.
Yeah, you've lost your powers.
You're right.
Thank you, Brian.
You are correct, sir.
On that, I will close the public hearing portion and ask if anyone has any discussion. And if not, if someone would like to make a recommendation, either to approve, deny, or modify.
I get the impression that as a group, we're all on the same page from what Brian's recommendation is. Is that a fair statement?
For me, yes.
Yeah, I think it, it's just the issue of if we want to go with the Anderson Township recommendation or if we just want to say, keep it as is.
As is written on the first.
Yeah, just basically keep it, you know, keep the zoning code as it is today.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Make no change.
Make no changes.
So recommend not approve.
The section one though, the, all the one sections we would approve.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the 100, I don't have any issues with that. I'm, yeah, I'm just for that building line situation. I mean, I think we're all on the same page that we don't want to change it from right-of-way. We don't want to change from building line to right-of-way line. We want to keep it at building line.
Correct.
Um, but I don't know, um, if the, you know, I, I don't personally think the Anderson Township recommendation is really necessary. I'm not like 100% against it. I just, it feels like a situation that isn't broken, that somebody's trying to fix something that hasn't been a problem.
I guess my concern on that is if we do nothing in the sense of saying, leave it as is, the trustees then can just say no.
True.
If this, in this way that if we say the Anderson, at least we have, I feel like we have stronger voice.
I think we have the backing too of the regional commission on this.
Yeah, but I'm with you. I'm like, I don't understand. I'm totally confused of the purpose.
Of the purpose, yes.
I understand the logic or ill.
Yeah.
Well, I guess.
No offense to anyone else.
No, but I think, I think the logic might be that if you are worried about how teardowns are going to look, this, uh, Anderson Township solution would probably appease the trustees. I think make them feel a little better about it that, yes, we are doing something. Um, and I don't think it'll create a whole lot of harm to developers. It seems to not be creating a big issue in Anderson.
So I wonder if, uh, you know, one of the things that Brian mentioned was that we've got a few options as to what, what we can do. I mean, we don't even have to take a vote tonight. We could table this and bring it back, especially since I understand we're going to have a February meeting. Um, I wonder if it might not be a bad idea to, um, at least table the section four discussion until, and, and request, uh, you know, further information from the trustees about what their intention is.
I would, um, I would recommend against both of those things.
All right.
Apologize, no offense.
Yeah, no.
Um, I, I would, I would, I would recommend against splitting the text amendment into two. It's one case currently, it was initiated together. I would recommend that you don't split it. Um, if you want to continue it, um, for, if you have some specific things that you would like to know, um, before you take action, that's perfectly within your purview. But asking the trustees to explain themselves when they're going to have the public hearing that makes the decision anyway, I, I don't think would be appropriate. In fact, I would recommend that they don't tell you anything outside of their public hearing because that's the point of their public hearing where they bring up their reasoning and then they take action.
And they're not, they don't have to, uh, follow our recommendation.
They do not know.
Yeah, I'm flipping because I originally was like, yeah, let's just leave it as is. But I, I understand what you guys are saying of having something to give to the trustees is probably better in this situation.
So if I understand you correctly, Brian, your recommendation incorporates the Anderson proposal and the 100, correct?
Yes, so the, um, the recommendation of both staff and the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission were to approve the amendments with the changes per attachment A.
So could we just make a motion? And I'm just hypothetical, I'm not trying to shove it down anyone's throat, but could we recommend a motion to recommend approval exactly as that paragraph states right here on page four?
Yes, you, somebody could make that exact motion.
Are we ready to do that?
I think we are.
Okay, I'll make, um, a motion that we recommend approval of case Sims 202401 text amendments, a request for approval of zoning text amendments to section 62.1, 64.4, 66.1, 68.4, 71, 72.4, 74.1, 76.4, 78.1, 80.4, 82.1, 84.4, 92.1, and 94.4 of the Sims Township zoning resolution with revisions per attachment A. Second.
Is that written?
Yep.
You think it's worthwhile, hold on.
Sorry.
We need a second too.
Oh, I did second it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, you know, in case somebody's watching on video, do you think it's worthwhile reading out, uh, attachment A?
Um, no, it's part of the record. Um, it's, it's part of the official file at the township and is maintained in the county offices. And it was part of your packet. It's part of the record of this proceeding.
All right. I'm sorry, Kelly, continue.
Mr. Utter?
Yes.
Mr. Eichman?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Cofflin?
Yes.
Any old business?
No.
None. New business?
We have a case in February. Um, office buildings to apartments.
Oh, really?
Oh, that's, is it the same one coming back or new?
No.
Oh.
Where at?
Uh, 8790 Governor's Health.
So is it near the other one?
It's between the General Electric Building and the Verizon Building, right?
Yeah, it's a couple buildings up from the other one, yeah.
Okay, so that same area back there.
Any administrative matters? None? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll sign it.
Mr. Eichman?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Cofflin?
Yes.
Mr. Utter?
Yes.
Excellent.